Seven, two thousand and fifteen. First up is a review and approval of minutes of the April thirteenth meeting. Any comments on it? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth meeting?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next section up is what we have for public hearings, conceptual reviews. We have none tonight. Next section up on our agenda is public comment. And I asked for a sign-up sheet in case people wanted to make public comments at the meeting. And we'll point out that they will be actual public hearings on both the projects that are on agenda tonight. We presently have CBS scheduled for May eleventh. We don't have a date for the Mohawk Preserve application, but I think we'll shortly have one, I'm hoping for, to have that public hearing in the spring, this spring. Okay. I'm going to hold you to about four minutes apiece. I'm going to time you. Within thirty seconds or within a minute of that, I'll raise my hand, so I'd ask you to heed with to that. And we'll begin with comments. Stan Altman's up first. What I ask you to do is come up, state your name and address, and make sure we get you situated into the camera.
Where you're going to speak this time.
Well, I like the audience, really on either side. It doesn't matter which side works.
Okay. So, my name is Stan Altman. I live in One Crescent Lane in New Pauls. I'm here to address you about the application from Mohawk Preserve. This is both the application for the subdivision and the application for the site work. I'm president of Citizens of Shuangung, and I'm also a trained engineer with a PhD in systems engineering. And the reason I bring that up is because in my business, in my profession, when we deal with complicated systems, one of the things we're very mindful of is that we avoid trying to look at the system as though these were separate individual parts, but an important part of understanding the complexity is looking at the relationship and how various parts This project, as you can see on this map, in terms of the share scale of this property that the property in question is eight hundred and fifty-seven acres, is about three-quarters of the size of the village of New Falls. And if we consider the property that OSI has recently purchased from Watchtower and the Studley Farm across, which is adjacent to the Mohawk property and its nineteen-point-one acres in question, you can see that this whole landmass is in fact equivalent in size to the village. So we're talking about a very large, complicated area, and it's not just a landmass. You know that this is part of a historic district. You know that there are endangered species on this property, and there are significant wetland areas. So it's very important when we consider this application, you take a look at how all of these pieces interact, particularly with the village and the surrounding area. In addition, unlike other access points in the preserve, you'll notice that particularly around the gatehouse area, that this nestles around a residential community, which there are eighty-six parcels. So you've got significant residential communities sitting right in the middle of this project One of the issues that we are particularly concerned about is the fact that in order to really understand the concept of completeness of this application, one really needs to take a look at how all of the various elements of this, and I'll talk to that a bit more later, interact with each other. And in particular, when you get a system this large and complicated, completeness also means that the board has a sufficient understanding of what actually happens and what the likely implications of a project of this scale going forward are, in terms of being able to make an informed decision about how best to proceed. And that's typically, as we'll discuss, we'll find that in fact, much of the information that the town board's going to require isn't really currently available, and probably won't be available unless there is a full EIS performed in order to answer many of the impact questions and scale problems that this project kind of raises. Some people might suggest that the information that the preserve has recently submitted to the board will answer many of these questions. However, if you take a close look at these reports, you find that they're incomplete and they lack information that the planning board will require. And some of the issues with respect to these reports is that they're not summarized in any way in how they interact with each other, and in fact, in some cases, some of the reports contradict each other. For example, in the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the conclusion is that there's no significant habitat within the project site, and yet that contradicts the discussion that takes place in the Threatened Endangered Species Assessment Report. Also, when we take a look at some of this, I want to quickly touch on some of these reports. There's a traffic study. Now, the traffic study is focused primarily around one set of intersections at the gatehouse, and it says nothing about the impact of traffic as it's going to impact the village or as it impacts the rest of the road system here. And in fact, it is blind to the issue of the fact that you have several miles to the west, this major campsite with traffic and parking. You have OSI's recently opened up on this property, cross-country skiing and other recreational uses for the property, for which the idea is to attract traffic. And in fact, the recently published on the website of the Mohawk Mountain House master plan is talking about building another wing to the hotel, to put another hotel up here, all of which will in fact impact the whole traffic pattern throughout the town. If you take a look at the wetland delineation report, the report only refers to five hundred and thirty-four acres, and in fact, doesn't address the three hundred and twenty-five acres that the Glenwood site falls on. And part of that is due to the fact that the report was done, at that point, Mohawk was talking about only purchasing a portion of the property, of which they currently now have purchased all of it. So the report doesn't address three hundred and twenty-five acres. The archaeological background and literature review only refers to thirty-nine acres out of the eight hundred and fifty-seven. And we all know that that particular site is a historic site, and in fact, has a long history of Indian and Flunning throughout that whole area on the hill. The Threatened Endangered Species Assessment Report raises questions about some of the endangered species, particularly the two different strains of bats, which are tree dwellers. And yet, it's very unclear over how the trees are going to be marked and taken down, and how that might impact endangered species, the Indiana bat, for example. On the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the report discusses runoff from the various locations into the Wat Hill and other tributaries, but it fails to make any comments at all about the three hundred and twenty-seven acre Glenwood farm with livestock operation, and how the runoff from that farm is likely to impact the groundwater. In section one forty-eight dash fifty-two D four of the town code, it suggests and requires that the proposed wording of any covenant, deed restriction, or associated agreements which are intended to apply to all, any part of the subject property be included. In going through these documents and the application, I find no reference to the reason that Mohawk Preserve is dealing with the Mohawk Mountain House with respect to all of the carriage roads in this property, nor does it address at all the question of the restriction that's referred to in terms of the construction of a single-family house on this nineteen-point-one acres. It suggests that there will be a restriction, but there's no language to indicate what that restriction is likely to be. In addition, the application refers to the structure to be built on this property to be a single-family home, but in the application, it describes the use of that single-family home to be used by OSI staff and OSI board members whenever they're up in the area. And so, the question is, are we talking about a single-family home, or are we talking about a large for OSI staff and residents? So in summary, this is a massive project with a very large scale. There are many aspects of this that interact with the town and the village, and those need to be fully understood before one approves any site going forward. And I suggest the only way to do that is to have a full EIS performed. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Benning.
I'm Larry Benning, and I don't worry about pronunciation.
Good.
I'm terrible. Okay. I've been asked to read a precis of a report prepared by C.A.R. Rodriguez, who might be here, on the area of potential effect covered by the archaeological report. The area is only thirty-nine acres. This is thirty-nine out of eight hundred and fifty-seven. That is less than five percent of the whole. It's a segmented report on a segmented plan. All of the eight hundred and fifty-seven acres are listed in the National Register of Historic Places. Therefore, the whole parcel is subject to archaeological review. The report recognizes that, quote, "The current project does have the potential to impact the integrity of this National Register listing, and further archaeological investigations are recommended," quote. So where is the rest of the plan? Although the report recommends for its APD, quote, Phase One D archaeological field investigations in advance of any earth-moving activities, quote, it cannot and does not comment on earth-moving activities that are already underway in the eight hundred and eighteen acres outside its narrow assignment. What all this points to is that we need a complete plan, and at some point, we should begin the public scoping of a complete impartial EIS. And I will submit to you a complete statement of that, but this is New Falls time, April seventeenth, if you want to see the report already, you've got it at Glenwood. Thank you.
Anyways. Parta?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not going to stand up.
Okay.
On one foot. I looked through the stormwater pollution prevention plan, oh, two hundred and seventeen pages, I think it was, and I have some questions that I think should be answered in a full EIS. I'm sure there are other questions that I missed. They talk about runoff from the various parts of this project. Some of them go into the Wat Hill, which is already a Class B, which means it's contaminated. Some of them go into a culvert along Two ninety-nine. Some of them go into the Klonik Hill, which is a Class AA, which is a Class B class, and then goes into the Wat Hill. And as we know, the Wat Hill already has problems in our section of the Wat Hill. So we're worried about these runoffs adding to the problems that we have from the Wat Hill, because it is before the Wat Hill gets to the town and the village. They talk about structures to prevent or to mitigate hundred-year floods, and we know very well that hundred-year floods are no longer hundred-year floods because of climate change. So I think it's inadequate. Maybe we need five-hundred-year floods, to rainfalls, to be protected again. And that's something that also needs to be discussed in a full environmental impact statement, because our climate is changing, and it will probably keep changing, so that we'll have even worse rainfall, more copias of rainfall than we've had already, and having problems with the ones that we have now. And indeed, there was a forum last week about trying to help the Wat Hill, because it would be nice if we could eat the fish, if we could swim, and perhaps we're going to need to drink the Wat Hill. And the cleaner it is, the easier it will be for what we want to use the Wat Hill for. And as a toxicologist, I was a bit disturbed about the use of rock dust on the trails, because rocks can be actually pretty toxic. Blining up rocks can be dangerous to the people who do it, and it can be dangerous to the people who like lay it down. It can blow around, and this testimony gateway is next to or within a neighborhood. And of course, it can be washed away and could cause problems with the ecosystems that are around. Silicosis is one disease that can be gotten from inhaling rock dust, and also, there can be heavy metals in different parts of rock dust. But we don't know which rock dust is going to be, and what are the hazards. Again, we need a full EIS to investigate questions like this, and other questions that I did attach just in this one plan, one of our plans. So we need actually to have all these details, which are not in the one plan that I put out, and the other plans as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Irwin?
Push the chair. After, push that chair.
She's giving me a hard time.
Just push that chair and...
I can't do anything else.
Oh, God.
Good evening. I'm Irwin Schuber, one forty-two Rensworth Road, New Falls, New York, though I'm actually officially paying taxes in Wagner. I pay my school taxes to the New Falls School District. Further to what you already heard Stan Altman, president of Citizens of the Shuangung, say, there are real concerns about the incompleteness and the omissions to be noted in the documentation so far submitted by the Mohawk Preserve. Somewhat complimentary to that, the Environmental Conservation Board, an agency of the New Falls Town Government, prepared an evaluation last year in which serious concerns were raised about Mohawk Preserve's proposal. The ECB identified such impacts as significant increases in traffic bottlenecks and gridlock, as well as increased local exposure to particulate matter, aromatic hydrocarbons, carbon monoxide, and greenhouse gas emissions contributing to the region's farming footprint, and of course, global warming. The ECB also pointed to the project's effect in diminishing public access to businesses on Main Street on weekends, as well as the already difficult parking problem, which would be compounded by still more cars moving or attempting to move through the village. The ECB statement also emphasizes the much larger scope of this project, including the newly constructed campgrounds that acknowledged in the preserve's proposal. You already heard Stan Altman indicate some of that as well. The ECB's own statement entitled "The Preserve's Proposal for Development of the Shuangung Hills, the Shuangung Foothills Will Have Negative Effects." It observes that the air quality, and now I'm quoting from the ECB report, in case some of you may not recall it, or may not have had attention to review it, the ECB statement states, "The air quality index of the Mid-Hudson Valley, including the town of New Falls, is often suboptimal during the stagnant off days of summer. The wisdom of deliberately adding to that load with more stop-and-go traffic must be seriously questioned." That's the end of that quote. "So far as I can see, the economic impacts and harm to our quality of life identified in the ECB's statement are, in their own right, a cause for concern." Now I'm quoting again briefly from the ECB statement. "New Falls property owners subsidize the tax-exempt statement of the foothills' lands with the highest property taxes in Ulster County, and in return, are able to enjoy them in peace and tranquility. If all one hundred and thirteen of the proposed parking spaces are occupied, and if each vehicle has on average two occupants, at least two hundred and twenty-six people will be walking and bicycling on or through the foothills on busy weekends. This may substantially alter the visual and recreational experience of residents if they are willing in the first place to face the traffic." All this is from the New Falls Times, July seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, page eighteen. I'd like to close with a question for the board, and really for everyone here, to think about. And here's the question that arises. To what extent does Mohawk Preserve's proposal threaten our quality of life? Well, a hard look at the proposed project through a comprehensive environmental impact statement would be the definitive means of reviewing evidence and expert testimony about it, and objectively evaluating its environmental and economic impacts on the community. Thank you.
Charles Rose.
I'd just like you to have your follow-up. In the interest of time, speed this up for you. My name is Charles Rose. I'm a resident of New Falls. I live within the circle of Irwin's political abilities that are current here. My focus tonight is simple. It's a request for a positive declaration under Seeker for the Mohawk Preserve application, now before you're approved. Let into you my, my name is Charles Rose. I, in my life, have been a resident of New Falls for thirty-five years. The purpose of this public comment is to formally request the planning board act tonight on the two applications before you, from the Mohawk Preserve, issue a positive declaration under the State of Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker. Given the applicant has updated and completed a full environmental assessment form, EAF, and supported many, and submitted many supporting documents, we feel that the planning board has sufficient information to make a POSDEC determination of significance under Seeker. By issuing a POSDEC, the planning board will demonstrate that it welcomes full community participation at the very early stages of this important land use decision-making process. I believe the applicant would like to see the decision-making process move forward in a timely process, and a POSDEC will allow the planning board to schedule a scoping session and allow the applicant to begin the preparation of the required, excuse me, draft environmental impact statement, TEIS, required by Seeker. In support of this request for a POSDEC for the Mohawk Preserve applications, you will find a map attached to the written copy of my public comment. This map is based on the information taken from the new Ulster County parcel you were in, so it's up to date. In considering my request, I ask the planning board members to consider the following information. Stan Altman, and I am a member of Citizens of Shuangung. We're through that, so I won't oyster that one. And you give me the copy. The point is simple. It's a large project, and it has significant impact in many different ways. One interesting point, though, which should be mentioned here, is the fact that we already have, which Stan didn't bring up, is that on this end of the town, as we know, is the pleser property of fifty-seven acres, which the board has already undertaken a full EIS for fifty-seven acres here. On this end, we have eleven hundred and thirty-two potential acres, eight fifty-seven, plus OSI, which was the initial applicant for this project. But now we have come to light, so many different aspects of that, the interconnectivity of all these projects. There's another note that we should be taking, and at least ask about. What is the future plan of Mohawk Mountain House? They've shown they have a master plan for a new hotel. If that should take place, all of these collective activities, even over the next five years, could be massive. And I just urge the board to be aware of that. A full EIS will uncover a lot of this. Basically, that's the sum total of what we're requesting tonight. Move forward as soon as possible with a POSDEC, and help the applicant and all of us to surface honestly and openly any issues regarding this project.
My name is Harry Ellis. I'm a resident of the town of New Falls, thirty-five years, year-round resident of the town of New Falls, the closest household to the gatehouse on the north side of Two ninety-nine, heading west, at the intersection of Butterville Road, Albany Post, and Route Two ninety-nine. I come to you in support of the Mohawk Preserve's application, to seek approval for the construction of the new parking lot in the gatehouse. I've heard a lot of naysaying, and disapproval of the development of a new parking lot. I understand concerns and sympathize with those that wish the things remain the same, and that we could live in this eucalyptus setting forever. Situations change, and we must prepare for this the best manner that we can. Some people use acronyms and cliches like NIMBY, Not in My Backyard, and they build it, We Will Come, cliche, to describe their dislike, their dislike for the parking lot. First of all, the building itself has been erected and has been there for a hundred years. Unlike the Rivingdale and the Park Point issues, it's not a question of construction or man-made edifice. It's a matter of providing convenience and safety for those tourists that want to walk the property and view the tower. Ron Knapp was kind enough to give a neighbor, his wife, and I a tour of the tower. To be honest, the tower needs a lot of work and money to refurbish in their store. It's likely to take several years to complete. And the interior of the building consists of five or six small rooms, the bell room for any commercial development, besides the current zoning classification's residential, an issue in itself that is difficult to change. The best part of the tower is the top of the tower, the view from the top of the tower that is, that is somewhat obstructed by the surrounding trees. A tourist is not likely to spend more than twenty minutes in the building itself. By constructing a parking lot, the preserve is attempting to accommodate additional traffic that may wish to visit the property. What are the alternatives? Parking at the gatehouse, Butterville and Albany Post, or High Pastor Roads, or, God forbid, Route Two ninety-nine along near the gatehouse? All these are serious safety and property concerns. Remember, the parking issues that used to exist along Two ninety-nine, or Route Forty-four Fifty-Five, near the ridge, trailhead, under cliff, and over cliff, they were seriously dangerous until the preserve constructed parking in Split Rock. We no longer have serious and hazardous situations at that location, and the parking lot is providing safety for hikers, climbers, and drivers. As the, as the planning board members, it's your responsibility to maintain the health and safety of this setting, requiring a forty-five mile-per-hour speed limit is paramount. Providing adequate shoulder for traffic to pull off Route Two ninety-nine for safe flow of traffic along the busy highway. Making certain that the line of sight and signage is sufficient for traffic that may be unaware of the turnoff. Providing medians and arrows directing traffic, and making visitors aware of the oncoming busy traffic along Two ninety-nine. I also think that the screen of evergreens might be helpful to block the view of the parking lot for neighbors and visitors. The biggest concern for the neighbors is traffic. How do you reduce the traffic? I think that we're going about it all the wrong way. Traffic is, on the weekends, is a nightmare. Trying to get into the village can be very difficult, to say the least, especially if there are events in the western part of town. Events at the fairground can slow down movement through the village to a crawl. I believe... I believe that another issue currently before the town board is paramount to reducing the bottleneck at the bridge. The Carmine LeBourdin Bridge is currently 60-plus years old and is to be replaced by a new bridge within the next couple of years. As it stands, the replacement will be about the same capacity, two lanes, as the current old bridge. Some members of the bridge committee wish to construct additional bike and pedestrian bridge along with the new bridge being constructed. I say, if we're going to be putting additional money into the construction of a second bridge, why don't we widen the new bridge to accommodate a left-hand turn lane eastbound onto Huguenot Street and a right turn westbound towards Springtown? These additional lanes would help reduce the bottleneck at the bridge. Locals and visitors that know the bypass from Huguenot to Front Street, North on 32 to Henry de Bois could avoid the hangups of trying to get through the village. If we're going through the additional expense of a second bridge, why don't we widen the first bridge? 60 years is a long time to wait for another new, wider bridge to be constructed. The county's argument for not widening the bridge is because the population is not expected to increase much within the next 20 years. That may be true, but how about the weekend traffic? That's likely to soar as visitors and fairgoers increase in number. By the way, the next bridge meeting is May 13, right here at 1:00 p.m. at the community center. I would imagine that if a proposal to build skytop came before you in this day and age, it would probably be rejected by the local residents. But the iconic symbol of New Poles is emblazoned on signs and posters everywhere. It is our brand. We need to assist and support the preserve. They are trying to maintain the dignity and the well-being of the environment while keeping that difficult balance between stewardship and their own viability. Hopefully, the preserve will remain protectors of our valuable use case for the next years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. The next person signed after you. Thanks. Couldn't read the name.
Chris Oliver, Pittsburgh. First off, I want to thank the planning board for their work to help our communities. I respectfully ask the planning board to require a full EIS for the proposed testimonial foothills project. Given that the entire plan has not been put forward and that a project of this size would seem to require a public scoping process to assess all impacts of the project, a full EIS is warranted. What started out as a promise to protect 857 acre foothill parcels and make it open to the public has developed into building two parking lots, construction of buildings and toilet facilities, constructing boardwalks over wetlands, asking for another subdivision to facilitate even more development of lands they promised to protect. When Bert Smiley sold these lands, he stated, quote, "We wanted to make sure that this land was never developed." The current proposal is the opposite of those words. The proposed foothills project will affect 400 direct property owners and will be set right in the middle of a quiet neighborhood. I believe that the traffic problem alone should cause great concern to the planning board. A traffic study done by Ulster County has already cited chronic congestion on Route 299 in New Poles. Additional traffic congestion will slow down emergency vehicles getting to their destinations and further stress traffic on 299, the main arterial road in New Poles. These issues need to be clarified in a full EIS.
Thank you. Michael.
Hi, I'm Michael Zeiler, New Poles. My commentary about the CBS project, the other end of town. A couple of weeks ago, I was at the planning board meeting, your last one, and the consultant had a few comments about traffic. And I can't quote them, I didn't write them down, but he was fairly optimistic that this project would result in traffic levels of service at that intersection, 299 and 100, that would be, I believe he used level C as the sort of general overall number. That information is very inconsistent with historical information at that intersection. That intersection is far and away the busiest intersection in the town of New Poles and has been for a long, long time. It's also, according to the 2006 New Poles transportation study, it is considered, or was at that point in time, one of seven high accident locations, referring to the section approximately from Port Cut to the railway. I just wanted, at this point, I'm just going to give you a little bit of information at the public hearing, and I'll have more extensive information. But in terms of historical background that I think is inconsistent with this, the Woodland Pond DEIS, which was in 2005, had levels of service that were actually worse than what they're proposing. It will be after their improvements. We know that traffic's gotten worse there anecdotally. We also know actually from actual data that it is that worse. The levels in 2008, the levels that they proposed in their DEIS for if they were to build it out at that time, and they have, were running more like levels of D, and in particular in northbound and southbound, which is the area where the major entrance for the CBS and Five Guys would be, that's the most problematic one. Those are running levels of D and E, and even in the study that has been brought to you by CBS, they're looking at levels already, mostly E and S, and that in northbound and southbound, it is in fact, yeah. So the other thing I want to point out is that you have first responder stations that are proximal to the senior section. You have the police to the south, less than a mile away. You have the ambulance corps, the rescue squad, less than a mile away to the north, and you have Fire Station 2 within hundreds of feet of there. That intersection is problematic as it is. As traffic increases there and you put these turnouts, it's going to make it even more difficult for our first responders to get through there in a hurry. Table 2 in the information that is provided by CBS so far, which is their level of service summary, paints a very rosy picture after these sets of improvements. I'm not, at this point, clear what all of those are, but it's hard for me, I would say I'm dubious that those levels of service will improve to levels that are better than they were in 2005. But I look forward to hearing about your traffic.
Thank you, Mary. Julie.
Thank you for having me speak. I started an online petition two weeks ago and it had about CBS and Five Guys asking people if they agreed that we should stop them for three main reasons: Traffic, supporting local businesses, and the character of New Poles and environment, I'm sure, within there too. It's received 339 signatures to date, and it's primarily being, it's on the New Poles Facebook page. And I've gotten a lot of, you know, good feedback from people about that. I have comments that I'm going to include. I don't have 339 signatures in this today, but I can provide that thickly seen also by going to New Poles' Facebook page. And that's always just a growing number as more people share it. But what's interesting to me is every time I speak with someone about it, I bring around a petition. My daughter and I have battle petitions. She wants to petition about the Mobergh Preserve, and I want this, and she's very disappointed. She wants hers to go online. But either way, she's getting a lot. That'll be, but she, you know, every time I speak with someone in person, maybe I'm talking to wrong people, but I am standing on street corners almost, you know, just about in jacks, you know, with the environmental meeting yesterday, maybe a biased group, but you know, still, everyone is against this. So everyone I've talked to, I have not had a single argument, actually, toward it. Some people did online, but still. So when I speak with people, it's very, this town is not interested, and the traffic is major. And I was doing, with my daughter selling Girl Scout, or delivering Girl Scouts cookies to our neighbor, and we got to talking about it, and we decided we're going to make t-shirts that say, "We are the people who can't take left," because we live between H.W. DuBois and Main Street, and I have since 99. And we have seen that we cannot take a left anymore. We won't. I mean, you can't go right either because we're afraid there might be someone waiting to go left when you get to that intersection. So, I mean, it's really truly the understanding impact. If you're on that, not to mention I have a young child who likes to ride a bike and I can't, you know, if more people have come down H.W. DuBois, especially Doozine, that doesn't have a street sign versus the, you know, it's the first opportunity to get back to Main Street, that is terrifying. We also have no sidewalks. So that's, you know, that's why any neighbor, I can get hundreds of signatures just from, you know, walking the neighborhood, and if I have the time, and I'll find the time if I need to, for sure. I did mention to someone it's going to be my job to help, you know, to fight this. So what was, another thing I did as per my job was look up CBS and I just Googled CBS and petitions, CBS megastore, because this should be referred to as a megastore. It's a 13,222-foot store, and people are referring to that size store as a megastore. And I keep consistently, you know, finding across the country CBS is sort of ignoring, you know, complaints that this is not the right place, it's a difficult intersection already, not the right size, not the right character. I found very few places that have fought it successfully, although Nantucket did. But Nantucket, you know, they've had 6,000 petition signatures. They also were able to go back to the fact that they were trying to break a zone law, you know, find a loophole. They are no chains. Nantucket is a no-chains island. And they ended up probably losing because of that, not because, you know, it was a bad idea or whatever. But they're sort of consistently ignoring things that, you know, even, you know, zoning laws, they'll try to do that. So it's fascinating, if anyone's interested, fascinating reading, if they're interested. I did also look at the traffic report, and I'm not an expert, but one thing, you know, lots of things, mainly it's incomplete, and I'd like to respectfully press a, you know, an independent study. I'm anxiously waiting here if anyone is going to do an independent study, if the town is going to commission an independent study. One of the problems with this traffic report, which I know is sizable, I noticed the peak times that they determined Saturday to, you know, the peak weekend, they only showed Saturday between 1 and 2. And Saturday between 1 and 2, everyone in New Poles is already at the cliff or having their lunches, you know, I mean, I heard, yeah, so Saturday 1 and 2 is their only weekend peak, you know, look for an hour. I think that's really incomplete. That's just one example of something that's just not sufficient to base, you know, what this is going to be like for residents on that, I think is really not good. And I think, of course, that we could be affecting how our town is perceived by tourists, by potential new residents, just as the place you just don't want to go because you cannot get through it. And the people on my street, you know, everyone around, it's our right to speak up, and we will be speaking up about how this will affect us. Not only, I will just add that this is, there is a drive-through, and I was getting a drive-through pizza with my daughter, and I'm idling. The idling, just as the terror, you know, the drive-through all day for CBS will create quite a bit of pollution that will seep, there's no, you know, wall, it's going to seep right to my neighborhood, it's going to seep right to the Mobergh Preserve, you know, the wetlands. And I said, "Wetlands grow these nice plants that do, you know, absorb toxins, but they're busy." You know, they're already doing that, and I don't want to overwhelm them anymore. And I like this idea of the gravel, too. I'm interested in what, you know, at the previous meetings, I just learned that they raise, they need to raise, or they want to raise the ground there, I think, with gravel, fill it in with gravel. And who knows what kind of, you know, dust will be, I think there was 1,300 trucks would be delivering, delivering the gravel, to raise it maybe 10 feet, that could be mine. Something like 10 feet for a very large area. So that gravel, you know, that dust, and not to mention all the exhaust from the trucks that are going to deliver it for a couple months straight is a real concern. So another, you know, environmental thing, including the pollution that would now be not filtering through trees, pollution from the thruway will get to our homes or athlete, and that's a concern. So I would also respectfully request a full EIS. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to make any public comment? Lovey Ne?
Name is Doug Yul. I was late because there was an accident going through the gatehouse. So I just think that's ironic when we're talking about traffic, that you used to the gatehouse, there was a two-car accident where they closed the road when I came through. I also thought it was ironic that they suggested that traffic be turned out to Huguenot Street. They had tried to divert traffic off of Huguenot Street because of the traffic causes vibrations and noise that damaged the buildings. And when you take that further, obviously, that shows that there's a tremendous amount of impact on the environment, just that one street having to divert traffic. We're talking about a huge project. We're not just talking about, you know, the parking area that was mentioned. When you take this whole thing together, you have cattle on land, you have a herd of sheep, herds of sheep, and sheep on pine. You're having a bike trail from town that's going to be coming out. Now they're talking about ski trails, with the bike trails. They expect so many buses that they wanted a roundabout. They're talking about horses with carriages, which means trucks with trailers bringing the horses in. This is huge. This is, just think about it, when we talk about 113 cars, they're not just staying there for the day, they're coming and going all day. So on a busy weekend, thousands of cars, buses, horses, dogs, bikes. This is huge. And I think it really needs to be studied in terms of the traffic, in terms of the noise. I can hear the cattle, different parts, I can hear just the cows move, which is okay, but I'm just saying, think about all these people, all these cars, trucks, everything. This is huge, and it keeps being added to. You know, they wanted to put it, they're planning to put a house now on 19 acres in one place, which I understand has a separate barn or garage of some sort, a separate structure. I don't know when they're going to stop adding on to this project. When they first met with us around two years ago, it was supposed to be 75 cars. It just keeps growing. Are there going to be gift shops, restaurants for the skiers? Are there going to be, you know, snack bars? Where is this going to end? This is turning into a huge resort. It's not a preserve anymore. Something is getting out of hand. I don't know where they're coming up with all these ideas, but this is going way beyond what it should. And I just want to point out, Mohawk is a huge corporation. We're not talking about the Smiley brothers. They sold the land for eight and a half million dollars to OSI, and then the preserve bought it back for three-plus million dollars. This is huge. This is a huge corporation with boards and a lot of layers of bureaucracy. So I don't know, Mr. Hope, I remember meeting with him two years ago, I don't know his role in all this, but I don't think it's the type of situation when you're having tea with the people who are in charge of it. I don't think he has a lot of control either, and this is not an insult to him, but it's just, it's a huge corporation. And I think we really need to slow this down, make them get a concrete plan, do an environmental impact study on all these projects, and really get control of this thing.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name is Donna Weisberg. I live here up the hill. I'm concerned about several things with the CBS Five Guys possibility. One of them is school buses. People making left turns create hazards, especially for buses coming from the high school full of kids. Where people have to pull up is very close to the light in order to make the left. So I don't know if that's because if they're making a left from north path onto 299 sidelines or what, but they have to pull up really close, and I don't know how much of this will contribute to dangers for our schoolchildren. And as was mentioned earlier, there are recent or current fights against CBS in many places, California, New England, right here in Kingston, and 1234567 that I have listed here. Another concern is CBS employees are working on demanding fair pay. They have the greatest disparity between CFO pay and the median wage of employees among the 100th highest grossing company in the U.S. The source is PayScale, Inc. So their $12.1 million salary is 422 times the $28,700 rest of them. So this is another concern. If we care about the people who live around us and what kind of jobs we've created for them, and whether there be livable wages. The traffic, everything everybody else has said... The traffic, everything everybody else has said, this all really concerns me, and I hope that you'll try to get, at the very least, an environmental impact study in the whole one.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? And we'll close the public comments for the meeting tonight. I will remind you again that CBS has a public hearing scheduled for May eleventh meeting, and that we have not yet scheduled a public hearing on the Mohawk Preserve. So keep that in mind. We'll move on to our remainder of our meeting and the application. You guys want to come up? Come on.
Evening.
Okay, I will say that I have blacked out all the material yet, it's been out a couple weeks, but I'm working on it, but our associate engineer has. I'd like to go over, Dave has sent you the press things. We got it? I bet Dave looked at what he had us here on it.
Received the recent middle of the plans, several environmental reports. We had some comments regarding, first is some waiver requests. Page three here. Some waiver requests that were made back in February, submitted part of the project narrative. Those waivers include a two-foot contour, topo coverage, will only be provided in the areas of the development, or ten-foot contour interval would be provided through the rest of the property. That makes sense, since the developable portion of the site is the, where the land disturbance is going to happen. And we use that in the design, ten-foot contours will show slopes and watershed areas. Location of the site features, we were suggesting that they use GIS mapping to just show those structures throughout the property. That would be, the accuracy of that would be certainly close enough. Location of all trees with Tovich, EBH, they have said that they would be locating the trees within the proposed limits of disturbance, that the other thousand-foot trees on the site, it really doesn't make sense to locate those since, again, there's no disturbance there. Location of the utilities on the nearby properties, again, where disturbance is going to be proposed, you can see whatever utilities are there. Location of culverts and drainage facilities, we're looking, again, at the disturbed areas where the stormwater pollution prevention plan is going to apply, where the stormwater management systems will be. So we are looking for those culverts and any other drainage facilities in those areas, but throughout the eight-hundred-and-fifty-three acres, there's no really good reason to go through that. It's not going to be used in part of the design. I think those waiver requests do make sense. We looked at site plans, noted that there was some wetland buffer, DEC wetland buffer encroachment that was going to require a permit, also noted that town wetland law is going to apply in adjacent areas. We're asking for, just to specify the future use of the Hasbrook House. We were asking for all proposed easements to be shown on the plans. The Department of Health approval for restroom facilities and water supplies needs to be provided, and we just noted that some initial subsurface testing shows a pretty slow prick rate out there. That would affect both the wastewater disposal, possibly above-ground systems, see, and also may make the stormwater management facilities a little bit bigger. There were no proposed grading plans that were provided, and we are still looking for topo around the Hasbrook House area. There's a note in the project narrative that the water usage will come from existing wells, and I just need more detail on those water sources. And as it was acknowledged before by the applicant, there's a lot of design information that's still required here. Stormwater management systems, landscaping, lighting, signage, various structures, a lot of details in the project plans. What we saw was several of the environmental reports that were provided for the purpose of getting through the seeker portion, so the board could be up to date on the conditions out there, the environmental conditions. But the detailed plans are not there yet, it's kind of a preliminary conceptual still. What we'd like to encourage is to go ahead and get into that detail. We don't need the finite detail, but we need more of grading plans. The SWIP that was submitted certainly looks like the practices that are being proposed will work. We don't have the details on that. We don't need the finite details, again, but we do need enough details to get to a public Just a note, kind of a reminder on parking, there's an electric vehicle charging station that's required for every twenty parking spaces, there's one bike rack for every ten that's required. Again, this is getting more into the details of the design. There's some information in the SWIP, again, the SWIP lacks details, but it really demonstrates conceptual methods and measures that look like they're going to be feasible to manage the stormwater on the sites. The archaeological investigation, a report was made on that, and we're just looking forward to the response from Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Places. Information collected that will be used in seeker. Threaten endangered species, we're, again, looking for a response from the regulatory agency to see what else is required. We also note that the project sponsor has agreed to provide ecologists to monitor the acne work zones, particularly to protect the species of special concern. I guess in summary, I just encourage more detail.
Go around, and again, my goal here is to get enough detail that we have a public hearing, and we have said in the end that we don't have a public hearing, and then issues come up and...
I understand.
So, as Dave said, closer we can get to a finalizer, almost site plan type of thing, puts everything out in front of everybody, and stops the questions about, well, what about that, what about that? So, kind of from my perspective, that's what I'm asking for you with that. Goal is to get to that stage. We've done a number of projects where the site plan is almost complete, or ninety-seven, ninety percent complete, before we've done the seeker. So we go through that, we see all the stuff that's in the site plan, and do the seeker, and there's very little left to do with finalizing the site plan through approval. So it pushes the seeker out further, but brings the final approval and the closer in. That's the trade-off. Board members, we have anything that we wish to bring up?
I would say the project owner providing the ecologists to monitor themselves is like the box watching the chicken house. No offense to you guys, but I would look for a third-party separate yield.
It might be interesting from your aspect on it, that ecologists submit, at the same time he submits it to you, he submits it to the town. So we would have it, same time you would have it, independent, you get it, we get it, this far, then we are probably on it. More likely on it, but he has an independent view on it, and it's almost like an audit. Kind of points directly up. So think about that as one of the things that...
You're talking about, you talk about a third party, Lyle, you're talking about some independent person. I mean, obviously, we would pay them.
Have agreed to provide, you have agreed to provide ecologists and autism, my own work activity zones. What we're always saying is that ecologists, if you have to monitor it, when he writes up a report for daily, for what, then he submits it to you and the town.
That's the same tone.
Right.
So I guess I would go a little further.
I know, I know you would, I was just trying to get a compromise.
Because I do in a world where a third-party monitoring is very common, and it gives you plausible belief, you know, like, it's not, it's not that we don't trust you, but you have a lot at stake here, and whoever you pay has a lot at stake. They have a job, you know? That's just my take on it.
Kick it around, think about it, and think how we can address that going forward. Okay. Manny Elsia? Is that this time? Peter, anything at this time?
Not at this time.
No, we're over the scene of the old plan.
Two things I want to do is, one, I have, we've had a request for waivers on certain aspects on it. Dave has written up, and then George has written up a resolution for it.
Are we going to have that traffic?
Yeah, I just want to do this one first, then we can do the traffic. You need to do another one now. You got one, right, Dave? George?
Do you want to do the lead agency first?
Haven't done that. Haven't done that.
Circulate it.
Circulation.
It's been thirty days.
Thirty days is up.
You can assume your status as lead agency. Might as well do that on the back.
Okay.
Give it to us.
We have circulated a petition for lead agency, and as luck would have it, we succeeded in securing lead agency. Nobody's objected to that, including DOT, DEC, and a few other entities. So we will officially be lead agency for the Mohawk Preserve Site Plan and Subdivision. Keep hoping, it never happens. George, you want to walk through basically what you put together for a site plan waiver?
Well, basically, what I did was to take Dave's report and put it into resolution form. It notes that you have the company agency, that the applicant's requested certain waivers. Dave has reviewed them. They find these waivers to be warranted based on the circumstances of the project, and primarily that's because these are the areas of the project that will not be disturbed when more activities are proposed. And considering the need for the waivers, you typically look at the benefit to the planning board in having the information versus the burden may place upon the applicant to provide it. Seems there would be a little benefit in having additional information that describes existing conditions that will not be changed, whereas doing a tree survey on the entire property, for example, would be a significant cost. And basically, we come to the conclusion that the waivers do not entitle the applicant to commence any action. That seems to be consistent with the provision in the seeker regulations that allows the board to review applications and determine compliance with technical requirements, which I believe would extend to considering waivers. So on that basis, I believe you could, if you wish, find Dave's condition, so to speak, on the waiver request to be satisfactory. You can grant the waivers, and should there be reason to rescind that in the future, based on information, you would also have the power to do that as well. That would be only in the instance that there is some change in circumstances that comes to your attention, inconsistent with the waivers that you're granting.
Okay, any questions? Basically, looking through site plan, and basically what George has done is taken the section from page memo and plugged it in here as a waiver request and justification Have a motion? Maurice O'Leary?
I have to tell you, man, I'm a little dubious about the lack of identifying all the culverts and drainage facilities.
I actually think that when we did the certified survey on the map, that we did, we hadn't for the first subdivision, because there were no impacts at all, but when we went back through and did it, I believe that we now have identified the survey plans of all of the culverts along the sizes and directions of flow. I don't believe there were any that we've missed, even on the five other ways.
I mean, this is a huge acreage, and so the potential runoff into neighborhoods or into streets and roads is huge. I mean, it's, I just think that when you go about a project like this, that that's one of the most important things to identify.
Yeah, the reason that we asked for the waiver is, I'm not certain that on the remaining land, that every culvert on every carriageway and every trail that exists has been shown, but I can tell you that all of the culverts within any of the improved areas that are currently carrying any flow of water in the areas that not only are potentially going to be disturbed, but are within existing improved areas, all have been located and shown on the map. I just had a concern that I didn't want to certify that I was showing every culvert on every carriageway when we actually have not traversed every of that eight-hundred-and-fifty-six acres.
I guess what I think would be the most important in my mind would be to know from the impact to the edge of the property, that your drainage structure is going to not increase in flow off the site, whether it's down onto Butterville Road, or into those houses, or into, there's some wetlands and ponds and things down on this side of Butterville. And I know some of those houses, like, if you get a flood and the water comes up a foot, those houses can be in trouble, you know? So I...
So we're talking about all the culverts and drainage off-site?
No, I'm not talking about all the site, I'm talking about, to manage the water, it's coming off of the domestic, the disturbed areas, all the way to the edge of the property. And identify that, just like any other project, that you're not increasing that flow in any way.
Those I will certify, all have been located. I'm concerned about the remaining eight-hundred-and-fifty-six acres in culverts that I know that they've put in to manage, you know, drainage runoff in the carriageways that we have not shown.
That are within areas that are not proposed for any...
Well, you know, when you're fixing trails and roads and things like that, you're impacting those. I mean, you're affecting the flow downstream through them.
Lyle, anything that's in the watershed area is going to be located, you know? Anything upstream that's coming down, we need to know, you know, like you said, how much is coming down. The goal of this and a requirement, because we're in MS4, is there's not going to be any increase from what is being disturbed, what is being improved, but we also want to know what's coming from off-site toward it, so.
So then where we capture it in, in the, and that's where I was thinking on this change. Assemble the accurate drainage analysis.
Yeah, forty-seven through forty-nine, something with town engineer to determine if it's needed to be shown, and if it is not, we'll wait.
If it's needed, we'll show it.
Okay.
No?
What does that mean? So you're suggesting we waive it, but if it's needed, you're going to say that we need it?
Anything in the watershed that we need for the drainage analysis, we have to have that.
If there's something outside of disturbance area, further back on the property, that we can't do the calculation because it does contribute to it, Dave thinks it's needed for the drainage analysis, we'll provide it. And that's what it basically is.
There's actually several watersheds out there, and some of it is going to do what it's doing right now and not be changed.
Okay. So, thank you, Lyle. Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I don't have to know a little more.
And two members are out.
Traffic. We received the April submission from the applicant, who reviewed that study along with the plans that were included with it, and we had a number of comments that were listed in our April twenty-fourth letter. Just to go down through them quickly, and we can talk about whichever ones that you probably want to touch on in more detail. There's some gravel parking lot areas proposed in the testimonial area. We have a question about how those will be defined. Is it just going to be an open gravel parking lot area, or will there be any differentiation on the fence or somehow in the parking lot to describe that this is a nine-foot spot, not a ten or twelve-foot spot? And, you know, a seventy-car parking lot turns into, you know, fifty cars.
Sorry.
Or liberal with their parking space. There's some bus parking shown at the Hasbrook House. We had asked if that was just for loading, or if that's an actual parking spot, and I think, and have the correspondence reviewed, mentioned that it would be used as a parking spot during that time. If the applicant has anything else incorrect, you know, jump in and let me know. The traffic study was conducted based on, you know, industry accepted practices. The trip generation estimate that they followed has a logical rationale to it, and they had looked at basically uses around that area, but also how much parking they're going to provide there. Going into some of the details, they had assumed about seventy percent of that parking lot would turn over in a single hour, meaning if you had a hundred cars parked in there, seventy of them were going to come and go in that single hour. Obviously, as people come into that parking lot over time, they're not going to stay there all day. Some are going to stay there for a couple hours, you know, do their walks, their hikes, et cetera, and then come back and leave. And as they leave, they open up a spot. So to assume that they, that seventy percent of them have all kind of left and been replaced in that hour seems like a pretty conservative approach. Over that entire day, it's likely that there's a few that are going to leave at a time, some are going to come in, and it's going to kind of turn over, you know, like that.
Just on that one, we close down, you've got a lot of experience closing down the parking lots when they're filled.
Yes.
Is one of those high-follicued weekends when lots are filled by ten or eleven o'clock, is there much of a turnover going on after that, or is it a lot less movement?
No, in fact, we only do a one-in, one-out after that. I mean, we redirect folks, you know, to other areas they might want to visit, like the rail trails are back to New Paltz. And then after that, we only manage it as a one-in, one-out. So we discourage, you know, cars waiting if there's, you know, so that there's not stacking going on, because it's unlikely that a lot of cars are going to leave after that. So we put up signs that say, "Mohawk Preserve full, please come again," and we try to politely redirect people to other attractions in the area.
So I'm just thinking, how are you foliage, Dave, with a lot of people coming up? Once that lots get filled, then is the turnover rate would drop dramatically on that? Just thinking about that.
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on the parking lot and the use that's around it. You may not go and spend eight hours looking at foliage, you may go and spend eight hours climbing the cliffs. So, you know, you might...
If the car drives clear out there and the parking lot's full, he's got to drive clear back. So we still have a trip. You know, it's not, it's not like that trip goes away unless they had some way to stop people through way or something.
Right. I can address that. One, one way we manage that is all our trailheads are in radio contact with each other, in some cases, landlines, and so we will know and we will discourage people from leaving and trying to go to one of our other trailheads if they're all full. We had the situation, probably had it this past weekend, where Minnewaska Preserve's four current trailheads are all full about the same time. And so we, we know not to tell people to start driving around the ridge until they find an opening. So we really tell people, probably your best bet is to go have lunch in New Paltz until, say, two o'clock or three, when the lots start to open up again, and come back later for a hike.
So there could be a possibility that this line of having a sign that says, "All the lots, the remaining lots are full."
Right.
At the present time.
Right.
And they could see right then and there. I just...
If there's no bus in the bus lot, will you allow cars to park there?
We would probably hold it open as bus parking.
So you would not allow passenger cars to park there?
I mean, we would try to not let anyone park there. Sometimes people just will grab a spot if it's really busy and they're really aggressive. But we typically, I mean, at our visitor center, for example, we have a bus parking only lane. And it's rarely used by buses, but the main use for buses would be weekdays for schoolchildren in New Paltz School District, on Maryland.
Is there any kind of enforcement?
Our trailhead assistants and trailhead ambassadors would do their best to, especially on busy days, you know, make sure that every space is used efficiently and that spaces are held open, say, for, for a horse trailer or a bus. I think we have, what, two horse trailers and one for bus?
Two, two buses.
Two buses there and one at Hasbrook.
And one at Hasbrook.
Right. Two horse trailers at...
Testimonial Gateway.
At Gatehouse.
Right. And none at Hasbrook.
None at Hasbrook.
Right.
Do you ever think about busing people from the thruway?
We haven't, but we certainly are, you know, amenable to, you know, there's, there are a number of proposals and studies and ideas about working with the college, working with UCAT. The Shangla Mountain Scenic Byway is seeking funding for a busing study about a ridge bus. We would certainly support all of those if it made sense to, you know, increase the, you know, lower the carbon footprint and increase the mass transit to the site.
And we've designed the parking lot to accommodate buses, whether it's a county bus or a bus and a car.
I mean, like, I mean, a Mohawk bus.
Sure.
A Mohawk Preserve bus. Because I imagine the park and ride is not as busy on weekends as it is during the week, and so maybe people can park at the park and ride and get on a Mohawk bus to Mohawk, and that would save a lot of traffic for town.
Really have to look at whether we can, can get into the busing business and whether that's germane to our mission. It might be something that we could consider, so.
Well, I know, and again, I shouldn't mix words and don't have the applicant before us, but the motor park is talking about running a shuttle. And the idea would be the possibility of running the shuttle to the Gatehouse and dropping passengers off at a certain time.
We've actually had discussions where the idea is to go to Minnewaska from thruway and back, stopping at, hopefully, a testimonial gateway, our visitor's center, and Minnewaska, and then back on a weekend. And hopefully, people will use that service and not drive their car.
And it's always really, frankly, been our hope that there would, would be, you know, a private market solution to that, where a bus company really saw a need and met that need, so that we, as a land conservation organization, didn't have to get CDL drivers and buy, you know, rolling stock and run a bus company. But we're certainly amenable to those kind of arrangements and partnerships as long as they reduce impacts to transportation.
And I think this happens around places, and people have airport runs and things like that, where they take, they have their own buses that pick people up and take them, and it's for the people that come to use the preserve, and it would make it easier for them to get there.
Getting that may be another option, not another problem, because the buses are going to be tied up in the forty, sixty-minute wait to get into town, going at one point five miles. So, hell, you're not going to give them forty cars.
Not if they go, yeah, I was just going to say.
I personally think if you have a bus, you're going to have forty cars to replace that, forty more cars to fill that gap. So I think you're going to have a bus and forty more cars.
And forty, okay. I don't want to get too far.
I have just one more question. On the horse trailers.
Sure.
Is there specified areas where the horses can go?
Horses are allowed on all our carriage roads.
Okay, now, on public roads, how are you going to police that?
Public roads, we really don't have any control over people riding their horses on public roads.
But you're bringing, because you're bringing them into the area.
To, to ride on the preserve.
Right. So you're not going to, it's not, none of your responsibility that the horse trailers parked on your property and they decide to go riding down Gatehouse.
Right. I would imagine that that would be a less desirable place to ride your horse if you have...
It's been done.
Yeah, I know, I've actually seen them out there. There's, there's one horse trailer in particular that parks on Gatehouse Road and exits there and uses the foothills. You know, people use the carriage roads for horses, and horses and motor vehicles don't interact. If we can provide an alternative, I would hope that that is, that that's the preference. Yeah. But, but if folks are allowed to ride their horses, I imagine...
They ride the rail trail, too. Surely they get off that one also. Okay.
I just add to that, we are, we're very interested and concerned about, you know, the public roadways around the site. So we've supported, we would support, you know, whatever the consensus of the town and the neighbors is on parking restrictions that would complement this project, and to the extent that it would benefit the surrounding neighbors.
Yep. Okay. Again, I don't want to get too sidetracked on...
Going, going along with the parking theme, there's some, some discussion of agricultural fencing proposed along Gatehouse Road to help restrict that. There's obviously safety concerns for if the fence is situated so close to the road that you physically can't park there. I don't know if that's the intent or not. The other side of it is, by providing, by restricting access through the use of the fence, you know, are you intending to discourage parking along the road? Because once you park, then, you know, the fence precludes you from getting in. Is that the situation?
The intent, that is probably our most porous property line, is that run along Gatehouse Road, and, and the idea is to, to focus people through the safe and managed access points. Currently, paddy correction wrong, that was, that's a fifty-foot right-of-way on Gatehouse?
Correct.
So the idea would be, the fence would be twenty-five feet from the center line to Gatehouse, which at a twelve-foot lane leaves you about ten feet clear of the edge of pavement. There are, along most of Gatehouse Road, the grading and drainage is such that you can't park, there's a roadside ditch which precludes you from parking. There are a few small sections where folks can, and I've seen them, they can get their wheels off the pavement and actually park there, one horse trailer in particular. The fence hopefully will discourage that kind of activity and really bring people into where we, we want them to access the property.
So some kind of more active enforcement you can have to...
Well, we also have our ranger corps that is constantly patrolling the land, and we have a system of what are called positive discouragement, where we have some little flyers that we can place on cars that are parked in unauthorized areas and let them know that they're parked in an unauthorized area and direct them to where it's, where parking is permitted on the preserve. So it's that gentle kind of reinforcement for the, for the people that are parking on local roadways. And, and the idea is that having these safe and managed access points with adequate parking will give people a preferred place to park, you know? It's going to be much nicer to park in an area designed for parking than to try and find a postage stamp to park on adjacent to the road.
Okay, I just want to go back to five. Basically, you've indicated that there's no significant change in the operations of the study area intersections. I mean, that the levels that they exist now pretty much remain the same.
Yeah, and, and part of that is because the, the intersections around there, relatively speaking, don't have a lot of traffic coming out of it. Traffic coming through into these areas are primarily along 299, so you don't have people coming out of Gatehouse Road, turning onto 299 and coming to, you know, the parking lots. Same with Butterfield Falls, or Butterfield Road. So traffic coming back and forth, that being on a major highway or major roadway, tends to have less effect than if you were adding a lot of traffic to a stop sign and coming up to it. In the instances of these parking areas, if the parking area, instead of coming out on a 299 and came out on a Gatehouse Road, then you'd have a lot more traffic coming and going from there. When they came up to the stop sign at 299, it would have more of an effect, you know, on those intersections. So by the traffic coming directly out into 299 and then going east and west, it has less of a negative impact on those areas, intersections.
So putting, putting the entrance on 299, you'd say is that...
Yeah, feeds it directly to the highway that people are going to use to come and go from the origins.
Okay. It seems like you're talking about one hundred and forty cars an hour.
It's less than that.
Seventy...
It's about a hundred.
Seventy percent turnover, one hundred and thirteen car spaces, that's, a car coming is a car going, so it's a hundred and forty cars per hour coming out onto 299.
It's about a hundred and eight. They've, they've got a table in here. It's a hundred and eight for the testimonial gateway, and then it's another twenty-eight at the Hasbrook House. So...
But if you add credits, it's ninety-four net for both sites total.
Some, some of that traffic is intended to be people who are, they might be traveling past this site normally, and they would normally go to the traps and park there, but they may say, "Well, I'm going to park here and go on." So what would normally be a trip all the way in doesn't necessarily go that far and have stopped here and used this facility. Another thing that they pointed out in their study is that they're expecting, I think, roughly seventy-five percent of users to be existing preserve members and people who are already coming to the area to, you know, frequent the facilities. And then the remaining percentages would be new trips to that area. So it isn't a completely new use in the sense of everybody who's going to come to this parking lot is all going to be from outside the area, meaning they're, you know, a new trip. They may be existing users who typically are going to go out on this weekend and use a facility, and they're going to happen to use this one.
Okay.
So I think that goes into kind of a trip generation and kind of, you know, traffic side of things. Of kind of particular interest was the site businesses that were measured out in the field at these, over these driveways. Starting at the testimonial gateway, as you know, the intersection or the proposed site driveway is kind of in between two sets of curves. Speed limit out there is fifty-five miles an hour, and... And the applicant had identified that there is an existing easement with Ulster County. When you're at the gateway side driveway and you're looking to the right. And you can kind of see in the photos I provided on here in my memo, there's a historical area of around nineteen ninety-four. And you can see that that area is pretty well cleared out. And even when you drive by it now, you can kind of see where the old growth, you know, forest kind of was and then how the smaller vegetation has kind of creeped in. So it may or may not have been maintained in that timeframe, but you can certainly see where it's growing. The position of the driveway is limited based on the speeds that are out there. But they have the ability that clearing those areas would give them enough site distance well above what they would need for those speeds. So that's included in their proposal. What I don't know is if their intent is to clear that entire easement or if there's some, you know, balance that could be reached where the, I think the easement is probably about fifty feet wide at its maximum and they're only maybe a hundred, one hundred and fifty feet short of site distance. So they could clear out a smaller amount and not fully go back to what it looked like in nineteen ninety-four, but find some compromise there. One question that would come up is over the years, that vegetation is going to grow back and it will affect site distance. So what would be the long-term maintenance of that area? You know, would it be, would it be the applicant's responsibility in the short term to get it working and then fall back on the county as long-term? Or would the applicant look to create a maintenance agreement that periodically, as it needed, it would clear out that area?
That is part of their project, correct? They don't need an easement themselves.
They don't, the easement already exists. And it could have been an easement that was originally provided when Jacob's Lane was constructed.
That's what it was, it was filed with the subdivision, so it was probably a condition that the town put on, you know, the subdivision.
Wasn't there another subdivision going in closer to where your proposed?
Another access road on both sides.
Was proposed across the street, I think that's the one that influenced the sight line.
Okay.
The second.
Second phase.
It's two that they gave up.
Right. Anyway, I think between DPW and you and us, we got to have that issue addressed and how we're going to handle that one because I think it's really necessary.
The county highway department has identified it as a concern, so, you know, we may see that it got one. We get the permit from that, so.
No. We should have known, we have an easement there. Oh, they do? Okay. All right, anyway, that's, we'll have to keep that, hopefully it's one of those issues we need to address.
So similarly at the Hasbrook House side driveway, they've got some site distance limitations there to be vegetation as well. They are proposing to realign the roadway to help just the access come in at a ninety-degree angle to 299. And then as part of that, clearing out the vegetation along the road to meet those site distances.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to regrade the slopes approaching that, the new driveway on both sides too, so. Yeah, because it takes a long time.
And that area we do is on property, so we do control that, correct?
Okay. I got Ken, any questions on, you want to ask?
Yeah, the entrance way, the current entrance way going into the testimonial gateway, what is your, how are you going to control after the, after supposedly putting a new parking lot, how are you going to control the parking and the U-turns in the middle of the road and parking on both sides? Parking in the ditch is a new, with the town, ditch the road and they parked in the ditch Sunday. So, I mean, you know, you're creating a parking lot. What are you going to do to stop the parking in that area right there?
First thing we're going to do is right now that Lenape Lane where intersects Gatehouse Road is a very cute angle, almost a Y. First thing we're going to do is realign that entrance to be a T, which pushes it a little further into Gatehouse Road. So it doesn't look as if you're going to be able to drive right up Lenape Lane on 299. You'll actually have to make a left into this driveway. By doing that, we're going to reclaim the area that's currently all gravel where people are parking now with grading and vegetation and make that an area that you won't be able to park. That driveway will remain as an administrative access point. It'll be gated and locked and we will, the preserve will be using that for administrative and emergency access to the front hundred acres of the testimonial gateway. So it's a combination of realignment and a little land reclamation with grading and plantings and eliminating that sight line that really draws you off of the highway up into Lenape so that it doesn't look like that and there's less room to park. That in combination with patrolling that we do on all our driveway points on the preserve, we feel like we'll be able to manage that and hopefully change the culture of parking there with a new, with a new parking area.
I think in the earlier ones, Chris was highways superintendent, why did he put that T intersection also?
Yeah, I mean, if they're going to reclaim it and take away that parking, I mean, that's what should be done.
Yes. That's what we're going to do, yeah. Will people still pull in and turn around? Probably. Will they park in the ditch? I hope not, you know, but.
But your patrolling has to be an oblivion.
We can, we can help with that, yes.
We have only the power of persuasion.
Okay. Anything else you want to bring up on this one?
I think that kind of covered the full debate. The study did the traffic counts in the spring and the fall. They also did include as background traffic, the campground down the road. So they included that as some background information here.
Okay. All right, that's kind of the things that I wanted to essentially cover with you tonight. Again, my emphasis is to get to the public hearing, so I think as Dave said, peel the next layer of the onion down a little bit and get some details on as a site plan. I don't have to know every name of every bush yet, but eventually I will. But at this stage of the game, to the extent we have the T intersection, more detail on it. Enough that if someone wants to look at it and see actually what's going on, I think we can read through. I think first shot out, you know, the studies provided were helpful, I think. As usual, you had some questions raised and a public comment, I saw you taking notes. So I think to those things that you answer upfront, it saves the time on both ends of the deal on it, so. That's where I'm going.
One additional thing I'd like to reoffer the board, we did this in December, but now that winter has broken.
Your snow has finally gone?
Almost, right.
There is nothing like being on this property. Looking at a plan on eleven by seventeen and being on eight hundred fifty-seven acres is like night and day. We have stakes in the ground on site and we would really like the opportunity for the planning board to come out in as many sight walks as we need to do and walk you through entrance driveway, the perimeter of the parking and where some of these wayside structures are sited. Now's the best time of year because it's really the worst case, the leaves have not come out yet. I think you're going to find that it's pretty invisible, some of the stuff, most of the stuff that we're doing.
Kelly, hold the board. There are a couple of dates, I'll just ask, generally speaking, weekdays, weekdays, weekends.
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 Weekends or evenings, okay.
Yeah, I'm evaluating the fourteenth, but the quarter fourteenth will be good.
Weekend?
Weekend.
I will put out for the next two Saturdays in May, yeah. And we'll see, we'll get numbers on and then we'll coordinate with you guys.
Very good.
It'll be a morning, right?
I stressed to Peter too, not to have any more than three in town.
We don't take any action, Mike, not to worry.
I don't, I'm not worried about you. Not worried about what the board's going to do.
Good, so we'll coordinate through Kelly?
Yeah, Kelly gets it out, this week we'll get the other two board members who are not here and we'll put out the two Saturdays. If three can make it on the first Saturday, if four can make it on the next, we'll do it that way. If you're comfortable with that, but.
You didn't stake out like the entrance on 299?
It's all there, stake it out, yeah. There's a few things that will for refresh.
We know it's going to rain on those two Saturdays.
Of course it will, right?
And I've always scheduled them that way, so I'm not worried about that.
Michael, Peter, Peter will do it, he'll do it three, three in one or whatever. But I really, I don't want to have four people at one time.
The only Saturday that's out is May second because we have our Rock Ridge event is staged at the testimonial gateway.
All right.
No, I can't do the Saturday around May eighth because I'll be in Rochester.
Well, we'll put them out.
We'll put them out and we will accommodate.
We'll do the Saturdays in May, we'll try to get three, three in one or whatever you want to have. Who's assigned?
It's more cyclones, aren't we?
We pulled that one.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a counter.
It's the same one.
Well, I know I wouldn't get the, there's also these notes to the law, that's what I'm saying.
Are you going to circulate your presentation?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it, yeah.
Somebody will circulate that.
Or whoever.
This is the one that we have.
You're going to send this out?
Well, we got it, got it. Sign off like that.
Yeah, but we'll have a nice this one, I know you're going to file that.
One person doing the circulation instead of Mike having hands.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I know you guys have been here and I know we have May eleventh, we have a public hearing on the project.
Yes.
But I really wanted to cover today, from my perspective at this stage of the game, is Ken's here. And I really want to go over the traffic study in Ken's report and then have some discussion on that. So. Switch hats, switch gears, yeah.
So there's been some correspondence on this one and there was a report provided, generally dated February of two thousand and fifteen. We had reviewed that and then subsequent to that, you had also received a letter from DOT dated April thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. So quickly going through my comments, the applicant's proposing to reduce some of the guide rail that's on Orange Putts Road as it leads towards the site on the right-hand side. And that's to facilitate their driveway coming up. We'd asked what, where are the point of need and the end termini and those technical details that are needed to decide where you can end guide rail. Just because you've cleared the obstacle itself doesn't necessarily mean that's where the guide rail ends. And probably more for the board's education is the strength that a guide rail provides is developed over its length. You can't just put up a ten-foot section of guide rail and expect it to, you know, prevent a car from just blowing right through it. So by having all those posts and a long length of it, it develops strength and helps redirect, you know, vehicles and keep them on the road. So they're shortening that up, they're doing some grading down along that section. So we asked about where that need and how far back they can reduce that. They have got site distances shown on the plan, that's something that DOT also commented on, looking at the site distance coming out of the driveway. They look left and right along the roadway and looking to the right to the north is limited by that vertical curve that's just north of there. It's, the stopping site distances are adequate for forty-five miles an hour, but the interception site distances are, I think, a little shorter than that. So in my comment number three, I kind of get into discussing those site distances. And when your site distance is equal to your stopping site distance, that means if a car were to pull out of the driveway, somebody approaching them on the main line could see them and have enough time to stop. Presumably that car is turning and getting up and driving up to speed. So the driver who's approaching on the main line would hit their brakes, slow down a little, reduce their speed and then kind of follow along. So normally that would be okay with development that has very few trips because it wouldn't happen now. With a development that's going to generate a lot of traffic and if you rely on that, that means people are going to be doing that a lot. You're kind of putting the need of stopping in time on to the driver who's on the main line. And you're not giving the person who's pulling out enough time to decide, do I have an adequate the app here or not? Should I pull out, is it safe for me to pull out, et cetera? So by providing the site distances, it helps that person who's pulling out of the driveway be better informed and make a, you know, better decision as to pull out. So we had asked if there's any opportunities to maximize the site distance on the driveway? Is it something where the driveway can shift over? Unlikely it's going to be, you know, rebuilding the road to remove that crest. Is it involving clearing on that side of the road? What are the options in that area? We had talked about service trucks, you know, garbage delivery, can they adequately navigate the site? You know, are the dumpster locations in a good position where they can get access to? And if there are any delivery, what size are those trucks? Are they big tractor trailers? Are they single unit trucks? Are they left on the site? Are they there for an hour? Unloaded, loaded, et cetera, and then moving on. There's a sidewalk.
Just a second, do you have a copy?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, hey, I already taken off, I just, you know, whatever you should.
There's a sidewalk proposed coming down from the corner. If the slope is more than five percent, I think you need some level adding, I don't know that it's that steep.
It's not, it's, it's as steep as it's five percent.
They'd asked if there was any right-of-way restrictions on 299, but they're proposing their right-end entrance and I don't believe there are any restrictions there. There are, as we know from DOT's correspondence and I think some back and forth of the applicant and town, there are bicycle and sidewalk connectivity projects in the area. Where those all are, I'm not fully aware of, but I have a general understanding that it's coming over from, you know, Poughkeepsie and the town of Lloyd and connecting through New Falls and then going up to North Bud Road and down Henry de Boyd. One of the comments that kind of comes from that is will the bicycle facility be two-way traffic? Will it be for one-way? Obviously with bicycles that are on the road, you're supposed to be traveling with traffic. So are they intended to cross over and use this multi-use path to go in both directions? And what happens when they get to the bridge over the throughway? If they're coming in going westbound or eastbound, then they'll need to be on. If they're coming in going westbound or eastbound, then they'll need to be on the south side of the road, short of being on the north side of the bridge going opposing, you know, traffic. So what are those plans and how do they integrate into this? Justin, you and I had a... We ran into each other at a meeting a week and a half ago or so and you had talked about widening out or providing grading behind the guide rail today to accommodate some future multi-use trail or whatever the plan is in that area. Could you expand on that?
Yeah. What we've proposed on, our front is along 299 and then along North Putt to the driveway entrances, basically grading out, extending the shoulder in that area about 10 feet. Again, because the level, to date that I'm aware of, the level is still conceptual of this trail connection. DOT in one of their original letters made very clear that we didn't want anything constructed in that area that would impede, excuse me, any future development of what they are looking to do there. Whether it is a multi-use trail, you know, how that would be laid out and whatnot. So we're not proposing to build any trail or whatnot at this time, but what we're looking to do is kind of set the stage for something in the future, at least, you know, from 10 feet or so from the edge of pavement that is. So that's what we have proposed to date and that's what's on the current plans, so.
So what I'm envisioning is behind the guide rail that's there now, it'd be a fairly leveled, graded area that they... Whomever the state county, you know, can come through and provide that multi-use path or whatever the plan is.
Whatever the plan may be.
If it's directional and...
Do a directional.
Correct.
Yeah, it's one of those. We got the DOT coming two foot corners from Town of Lloyd and then looking for going down the Putt would be more of a county, town trail building. So different agencies on it, but I think what you've shown on the plan so far is that it's open to whatever, whichever one comes first or second, but they have after red and including the right-of-way down Putt Corners that will allow us to keep that if it's a six-foot. It's a six-foot.
Yeah. The other thing that we talked about shortly on plans with the board today was an easement along, really from our, almost from our access travel into North Putt going north along North Putt there, about 15-foot easement for future construction on the side of the multi-use road maybe because that's in the area where there's really very limited shoulder. If you're traveling north and early inside, the grade kind of climbs up into our site. So we're just looking to facilitate, you know, the additional or potential grading that could or may have.
Your plan would be to grade from the corner to your driveway and provide the easement beyond?
That's correct.
Because I think as you get closer past the side driveway, it's no longer an embankment that goes down. It becomes a slope.
Correct.
In fact, you have to cut back.
Correct.
Would that improve any? Is it the slope that's limited the sight distance or would that...
Potentially.
Would this help any?
Potentially, yeah.
You still have the vertical curve.
Yes.
That's really the key factor. We looked at doing, I'm sorry, filigree leaf for mason. We started looking at some clearing there to help in the interim, pulling that back because that slopes up away from there, but you still have the limiting vertical curve on the roadway itself. So you could open up the sideline, but you still have the other side of the vertical curve, so.
Okay. And the road tends to curve away in that direction. So you'd be looking at more, be opening up the sideline for more field and woods, not a side of roads kind of travels. Kind of along those lines too, you know, they're proposing sidewalk connections, two of the legs there and DOT in their recent letter had asked about providing combinations on all four legs. I think, Dave, you had kind of responded back to DOT a little bit and gave them some insight that one of those corners, particularly the northwest corner, has a slope that goes down into kind of the open land area that might be problematic to kind of throw behind and to widen out.
I asked the DOT, I gave them that information and asked them if they were still interested in that connection and they responded back by email that they are.
What we're looking at there is at least getting a landing area. What they want to do is have all four corners with pedestrian push buttons and areas. So on that corner, the northwest corner, there's some right-of-way issues, but we would at least have a landing area. So if someone was crossing from the northeast corner to the northwest corner, it would be a crosswalk, it'd be push buttons and there'd be a landing area. If you know where the signal pole is on that side, we would have to rework that area and get a landing area. I think what DOT was looking for in addition, if possible, was to carry the sidewalk along the outside of 299. That may be problematic because of right-of-way and because of the way the grades drop off. But at least we would have on that side a landing area. So when someone did cross, they have a landing area and there would also be the push button, so.
Isn't there additional right-of-way on that corner?
On our side, we have plenty of right-of-way. It's, on the other side, it's a little strange what happens in there. So we're looking at it. We're basically getting the survey to see what we can do, but we know we can at least get a landing area in there. And then as part of responding and work with DOT, we'll see what else we can do to accommodate that, so.
I'll run that in a second. I did hear that, Dave, that they're going to put in a right turn lane on South Putt Corners.
Yeah, I was sending their, an email correspondence.
Because I talked to Barry Medenbuck at Hampton Inn and they've talked to him about right-of-way out front of Hampton Inn to make a right turn lane.
It's part of the county's improvement on South Putt.
It sounds right.
I'm just, you know, going to lead into the traffic situation and so, you know.
Yeah, we had looked at that when we did the traffic study for Hampton Inn years ago. We had looked at that and we looked at, you know, providing easement area. That's probably what they're in contact with Barry on.
Well, I didn't know if it was in the traffic study or not.
It hasn't been done yet, so, but it was talked about, so.
Okay. There may be other property owners that are tied into it. So the Hampton Inn can give some property, but there's still more property closer to the intersection.
Correct.
They'd have to get.
If they had an inn doing property, they'd be into our 15-foot sidewalk keys.
There's still a piece between Tworlager Lane and 299.
Correct.
That's somebody else.
Yeah, somebody else owns it.
So I can still figure out this left-hand turn at the CBS.
I agree totally. All right. It doesn't... I think it'd be... Is it easier? You want to look at the map?
No, 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 no. No, no, I've seen it. I just don't know how you come to terms with it, right? I mean, there's a left-hand turn, the traffic sometimes...
It's backed up more than...
It's all the way backed up to Fry Hafiz. I don't know how you're going to get it. But why wouldn't you consider two left-hand turns, two lanes to turn left to go onto 299? Is that what...
Well, one of the issues, yes. You're saying southbound on North Putt Corners Road, making a left onto 299 to cut down in the queue to get a double left.
Correct.
To do that, there's some right-of-way issues on the other side. You also have an alignment issue with the North Putt Corners, I mean the South Putt Corners. So when you develop a double left, you still have to be able to carry the through traffic and the width on the south leg is a constraint there. What we're proposing to do, and again, we're looking at this with DOT, what we're proposing to do is shift some of the green time onto the South Putt Corners because in the morning you see the traffic backing up in the queues. So we looked at the timings and the max timing that they had to modify that so that more traffic could get out of North Putt Corners, turning left onto 299. And that's part of our proposal. In terms of the upgrades to the signal itself, the DOT has asked us to put in the pedestrian, you know, accommodations. We're also looking at new actuation. So for example, when the queue extends beyond a certain distance, right now that approach only has certain queue detector, uh, actuation on the legs. So we're looking at putting in additional queue detectors. So when the queue does develop, that it would let the signal know that the queue has extended back. So right now, that's what we're looking at. In terms of the feasibility of a double left, I think the real problem is the south leg to get the alignment. Because when you do a double left, you still have to be able to carry through traffic and there's not enough width on the South Putt Corners leg. But that's what we're looking at right now. In terms of, and I know there were some comments about traffic volumes, you know, compared to what they were years ago. Couple of things, we've done several traffic counts out here. When we look at peak hours, which is what we analyze, we don't just look at a one-hour period. We actually count for three hours or more at a clip. So on a Saturday, we may have our counts from 11 to 4, but we zero in on what's the highest time period. So when you read our study and we talk about AM peak, PM peak, Saturday peak, that's the highest time period of volume at an intersection that we focus on. But we have the data for the other hours. We also have machine counts. We have the DOT counts historically. One thing that's kind of interesting, you know, when we do traffic studies, we have to include traffic for other projects. When we did the stop and shop years ago, we had included, you know, additional background growth. We had included more traffic than ever happened on the Lloyd site for where Lowe's is. So when we were doing studies in the past, we had to include all this. So some of the traffic projections have never materialized. For example, with stop and shop, a lot of that traffic is traffic that's already in the area, was just kind of reassigned at the driveways. When that study was done, we had projected even higher numbers because we weren't able to take credits for what we call pass-by or diverted trips. So when, you know, questions come up about how traffic has increased, traffic has increased, but not at the rates that we had looked at, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, in terms of what was going to happen. In terms of your question about the double left, again, that's something we're going to look at with more with DOT. The DOT has also asked us in terms of the bicycle accommodations, the bike lane that they want us to put in on 299, at least at the current time. There's been some changes in the last four or five years in terms of where you position the bike lane. So DOT in their most recent letter, which I think was earlier this month, the 13th, they confirmed that they want the bike lane adjacent, so this would be on the north side of 299, adjacent to the through travel lane. They want the bike lane there and then they want the right turn lane on the outside. So we've actually looked at it and how we would accommodate that. The other thing that they've asked for is in terms of the right turn lane, which is now channelized, that will be under the signal control. So you won't have that pre-flow right turn. It will, we have to modify the signal because there will be what we call an overlap. So traffic making a right off of 299 onto North Putt Corners will still be able to make that movement when traffic is in the protected left turn coming south down on North Putt Corners. So you have an overlap, basically. The right turns and the left turns out. So even though the channelization is going away, it will still appear in that overlap.
Go ahead. It seems like that whenever you see that situation where they've put the bike lane next to the travel lane and then you have a right turn lane inside and there's a few of them around.
Yes.
I mean, I ride a bike a lot and that feels like that's a very scary situation, especially at 45 miles an hour.
Yes.
Because you've only got a few feet separating you and if that person goes into the right-hand turn lane, you know, he's cutting across, say, behind you or in front of you, I don't know. To me, it doesn't sound like a great idea.
For many years, and Ken will back me up, but you know, we had the bike lane, we kept it along the curb, the curb line, I'll call it, whether it's just a shoulder or a curb line. So we kept the bicyclist on the outside and the federal government did a lot of studies about this and they made changes where they brought it when you're passing a right turn lane to keep it consistent with the travel lane. But for years, we used to keep the bike lane along the curb lane, even if there was a right turn lane, then when they got to the corner, you had to shift across.
And that's not speed dependent, like when they use these?
No. And then what they've done is because they've said that the bicyclist should be next to the through travel lane so that he's not going into the right turn lane and then coming back across. And I think the studies, and again, in roadways 40 to 45 miles an hour and below, that there had been a lot of accidents when people were in the right turn lane cutting back across. So they felt that this layout was the preferred layout. New York State has gone to it and that's the direction that they're going now.
Official layout.
They've told us that's the way we need to design.
I think it removes the conflicts like Phil's talking about with the crossover and it puts you right, as you're traveling, if you were traveling west down 299, puts the bike right along that same side of traffic, you know, so you're still right in line with what's going on.
You have sort of a similar situation on the opposite side when you pass the thruway and you have that right turn merge.
Getting onto the thru.
You're stuck out in the middle between cars going 40 and cars accelerating to merge.
Absolutely.
And it, I don't know, it just seems, you know, I take your word that that's what they're telling you to do, but it's counterintuitive.
Even in that case where you come off the thruway and you have that, you know, kind of high-speed acceleration there, I think you're going to see changes there over time with the DOT. When they really come to grips with this whole path because of these conflicts, they're trying to do away with a lot of these channelized intersections for that purpose.
Ultimately, you're treating, the bicyclist, it has to follow the same vehicle and traffic laws that the motorists does. So the old way was in effect allowing you to go straight from a right turn only lane and now it's getting the bicyclist in the right position so that you're going through from a, essentially a through lane and the right turners are on the right-hand side of you and they're turning right. Not that it's going to be any more comfortable.
Well, you get to the intersection, I'll just make a right turn.
I just have one more question.
I have one more question? Sure.
Since I came to this board recently and I wasn't here at the beginning of this project, what was the decision not to allow exit and entrance on 299? Why wouldn't you allow for a right-hand turn on 299 so that people going out on...
Heading back toward.
Don't have to cut across the whole thing and then turn right.
Well, the early discussions with DOT, first of all, when we first discussed it with DOT, they said, well, let us see whether or not we want you to have access to the state highway at all, whether or not all access should be off in North Putt Corners Road. Then upon looking at it, and this was one of the questions Ken had raised, we wanted to make sure we had the right-of access. Even though there's a right-of way there, a lot of times DOT, when they take land, they take it without access. So we had provided a plan for right turns in, and I think the first plan we had actually had right turns out. And they said, we don't want right turns exiting because of the potential conflicts with through traffic on 299 and we're in close proximity to the traffic signal. And with everything considered, the bicyclist, the overpass, the position relative to the traffic signal, they did not want a right turn out. So that's how it evolved. But we, as a developer, developer always wants as many movements as they can get, to be honest with you. But we did look at it and, you know, we have to concede to DOT, but we agree kind of with the positioning relative to the signal and are you creating other potential conflicts? So from their perspective, they said, let's take left turns out at North Putt Corners Road and then traffic can come down and they can proceed under the signal control. That's where we are.
Can I get, I just, one, I want to skip down to aisle 12 and I want to...
Can I get, I just, one, I got to skip down to item 12, and I want to, with all the minds on traffic, explain to me why the channelization and everything else that's going on there is going to improve the level of service?
Yeah, it really comes down to the improvements that they're making, they're proposing. Without those improvements, they're adding traffic to the intersection, and it's going to have delay increases, and it's kind of demonstrated in their table two of their report. But with the channelization changes, with the signal timing changes, they're making up for them. And the increase that they would otherwise have without the improvements is being offset by the improvements. Phil had talked about the signal timing changes at the intersection, and that kind of goes into DOT's comment of this intersection is tied into the other intersections along the corridor. So if we look at it, it's just this intersection, it might look fine, but changing a few things here has an effect up and downstream. So they're asking to look at that as a whole, both up and down east and west on 299. If that change at this location can be also accommodated at the other two intersections, then perhaps the improvement can, you know, completely take place. Outside of that, I think they would have to demonstrate that and look at what those impacts are at the other two intersections.
So those other two are the throughway and Stop &amp; Shop?
Yeah.
Yeah, Stop &amp; Shop and Cherry Hill, when that intersection was reconstructed and the signal redone, there were some accommodations for the coordination, the antennas and the interconnect, and I believe at that time, the antenna was put in at North and South Butt Corners also. We have the analysis that runs from Cherry Hill all the way over to the throughway ramps, and we actually have as part of the Wildberry project, South Ohioville also. But the intersections that would be part of the coordination really started Stop &amp; Shop, Cherry Hill, North and South Butt Corners, the throughway ramp, and then eventually over to South Ohioville.
Cherry Hill also talks to Mannheim.
Yes, yes.
It was a college project.
And you'll see those antennas up there, they look like the old antenna up on your chimney years ago, but when you drive by, you can see them up there.
It took six years. Like, I was on that project, six years before they got them installed.
Will these adjust with traffic conditions from day to day, or do you have a separate?
Well, the other portion of what we're looking at here is improving the actuation. So the way DOT has the timing patterns and the coordination, yes, it adjusts time a day and day a week. Right now, it's not necessarily functioning fully in that way. But what, in addition to the timing changes here, we're looking at some actuation upgrades to make it be more volume-responsive in terms of this particular intersection.
I'd like to say, and I, and again, we'll get down to gory details, but the narrative of the timing sequences, the intersections involved, what you would propose to the DOT is to actuate that. And just so, you know, we talked about North-South Butt Corners intersection, and we know they're tied to the next two, and to Ohioville. If we're proposing something here, and in the back of your mind, there's something that's going on at Wildberry also, that kind of ties them together?
Yes.
A narrative for us to?
Absolutely.
Talk about how these changes would affect it, and how they would improve the level of traffic right now?
Yeah, now that we have the DOT's kind of initial comments back to us, we've been waiting for additional input, we can do that now.
Okay.
So are you doing longer?
Yes.
So you will be able?
We have the whole network set up.
Because that would be very helpful in terms of?
Yes.
Mitigation, as condition of approval to make sure the mitigation will happen.
Yeah, it's individual.
Okay, Ken, I got you entirely off track.
I think I kind of touched on the major points. You know, we looked at the trip generation, which was consistent with, you know, industry practices. We thought that the pass-by percentages might be conservatively low. A restaurant can tend to have more people kind of driving by and saying, "Oh, I'm hungry, I'm going to go over here and use it." In the end, it just results in a more conservative, you know, analysis, because it's assuming more trips are coming than may actually be realized. There wasn't any discount for, I think pedestrians or bicyclists that might come in from the village and use the facility, so again, it kind of has that covered. However, they do have accommodations on-site for a pedestrian to come down from the intersection and bicycle parking, et cetera. So I think as the board had noted, there's, you know, queues southbound on the North Butt Corners Road, so there are going to be times where it's going to be very difficult to get out of sight, because the traffic is going to be backed up going southbound. For those who live to the north or to the east and can take Henry de Boy down in that direction, they'll have a right turn movement that they'll be able to make out of the site. They won't be stopped behind people who are waiting to left, turn left, go back to turn in. But those people who are turning left are going to have to sit on the site driveway and wait till a gap opens up for them.
And you don't think that people turning left will say, will give up and take the right-hand turn and increase the traffic on DPDW?
It's possible. If they're going to the west end of the village, it's quite possible that they're going to find that that is much easier. If they're only going a walk or two, then it might be easier, it might still be easier to turn left and then right versus going all the way around and going back the other direction. So there's probably a balance point somewhere in the village where it's quicker to go this way versus quicker to go.
If they use, people use Henry de Boy's now, or Shiver Town, or Zedden Road, and they come out, and they'll all be making right turns, and nobody will be able to make sure you're doing it. You know, people will be going down, or people going back towards Lloyd and going south. That's where I would think the other ones coming out. Okay.
Are the 16s still to be submitted?
Yeah, they, it asked for left turn lane analysis at the site driveway, and I think they've taken a draft, a quick look at it, but that will be submitted to the board kind of officially.
That's the issue we're talking about.
This is a different one, I think. This is at the actual site driveway.
This would be a separate left turn lane on, the need for a separate left turn lane on North Butt Corners at the driveway into the site, that's what that comment is.
So the left turn lane now, as you continue southbound, there's a left turn lane that develops at the signal, but you'd be turning into the site driveway from kind of just a shared.
And does the cue come all the way back to the driveway?
Yeah, it does.
Peak times.
Have you guys been talking to DPW throughout this?
Actually, we're meeting with them, again, we do have comments from the county already. I think this is the most recent, from April 1st, was it?
Yeah.
April 1st.
No, it's the planning board.
Right, but they included the comments from DPW in there. They have some recommendations on the driveway and on the shoulder improvements, so.
We're meeting with them tomorrow, the county, DPW, to talk about the driveway, a lot about the drainage that's going on in that area and whatnot, so we're coordinating all those efforts.
Have those comments been, has that letter gone to the board?
This is the Alstoria County Planning Board?
The board has it.
The board has it. Yes, rest me sorry. No, I'm.
And they include in there some preliminary comments from DPW in there.
And a median to the.
Right.
Access, so that when pedestrians are coming across, they have kind of a safe lane in between the entrance and exit lanes.
Right, and try to walk through.
Instead of trying to walk through all three lanes, they want to provide a, yeah.
Want us to provide a median area, so between the inbound and the two outbound lanes, it would be a median area where a pedestrian could take refuge.
Speaking of bikes and pets, have you been coordinating with the bike vet group?
Yes, you know, we've gotten their full comments, and some of the responses from the county planning and DPW now are now going towards what they're looking for.
Seems like it'd be nice if you guys would get in.
Well, everybody's working towards it. It's all the conceptual ones that it will be. The other county comment that they did have, and Charlie, just for your own application?
Yeah.
I'm not allowed to say anything.
You're not allowed to say anything, but go, I know, yes, yeah, yeah.
So you know why I was quiet.
I saw your squirrel this year.
But they did want to see the visuals.
Yeah.
Working on it.
We're working on it, yeah.
Okay. Again.
Those are the last, I think they're last comment, on the second page, last comment about the photosimulation.
Yeah, that, those are all the same. To the extent that, and I wasn't sure if, what the roof line on Five Guys was going to look like, or the roof line on, on a CVS, but to the extent that we can create some visual on that roof line rather than the flat roof, there's always been a concern going forward, and from our technical point of view, rather than logistics or changing of building, to give some, and I know you, we're going back and taking a look at it, just for the.
Did you see my pictures?
Yes.
There's actually just two of them, things from the last board meeting. One was about, you asked us to go back to CVS and ask them to make a comment about how they chose the size of the store. We did get a letter back from them, and, you know, Justin will give the board a comment on it, but it basically said, you know, they have their internal processes of how they design, how big of a store to be, and they think this, you know, obviously, they think this fits, you know, in with that, you know, so.
It's roughly the same size as the other.
And I, and again, from a visual standpoint, you were at the county, and, you know, they, we didn't set it up where they didn't have the.
Yeah, for whatever reason.
Seen that, and they were, that's probably some of that reasoning for the comment, but again, from my point of view, if anything we can do to mitigate the flat roofs in both those buildings, modify it or smooth it out would be appreciated. And again, I think those metrics that they're seeing would be extremely helpful, and these, if you had them for May 11th, would be even better.
That's where we're.
That's where we're shooting.
Yeah. I was going to, the letter that Charlie mentioned that we got from CVS is from Christian Potter, the original director of real estate for CVS. He wrote to the planning board, "CVS Health conducts extensive research and analysis for every prospective new store location to ensure that our stores will be successful, complimentary additions to the surrounding community. Proposed sites are also subject to an internal multi-level review and approval process. Proposed store and new quads underwent this process to confirm that our 13,224, 25 square foot prototype would be appropriate for the area based on the size of the property as well as the local population density and traffic counts. Our analysis also determined that our proposed store would fulfill the community's need for high-quality pharmacy services as the closest CVS location are 13, 16 miles away. Sincerely, Christian Potter." That's from CVS.
Okay. But again, from, those visuals would be helpful, and again, how to.
And speaking of visuals, that we had, last time, I think we had given the, I guess, some rudimentary elevation of the Five Guys, they have come back with something else.
Should I just?
I like this.
I'm just saying, it's just me.
Because CVS has so many, I got a couple more.
Where's that?
It's in Hampton, Connecticut.
Well, it just looks like a, just like a box.
Right, and.
I didn't know where the front was, right?
Yeah. And understanding with them, you know, as we explained before, that they have not built a lot of freestanding ones.
Right.
And Justin did go back to speak with them about that, about, you know, trying to come up with an idea, or really, at least some sort of prototype where maybe they are building other ones, and we do have a.
This one, this one is something of the Virginia, but this is something of the nature that they're looking to change the previous plan, too. The Five Guys, the signage would be in red and not white, but, you know, the brick accents on the other corner, and then it's a hardy board, white hardy board in between, and then those lines.
And we could certainly talk about, you know, the color of the siding, the details of the brickwork, and that, because that's quite a difference from what they came up with the first time.
Yes.
Is there something similar in, already that would sort of indicate for, you think, similar to what happened with the analysis and looking at existing community buildings and structures to say, this is consistent with neighborhood character?
You know, the medical building across the street, I mean, I think.
It's much more of a curve, it moves a little. Well, obviously, CVS builds other than a plain jane store. So what was the reasoning why they use it in this? I mean, and that's, there's other examples throughout the county and the state of you conforming to meet the, meet the community, to blend into the community. Why not new ones? I mean, obviously, did somebody, you know, did the planning board request that type of design?
You're talking about the current design that we're at right now?
Yeah.
I mean, we, the initial submission did come in with just our prototype store, which was substantially brick, you know, mostly brick, not very much architectural influence to it.
A big box store, that's what you're saying, as you go down Route 9 in McKipsey, that's what you're proposing.
Well, 13,000 square foot, I would consider a big, big box, but in talking with the board, I think we've developed the current CVS plan, which incorporates additional items to, to make it more interesting, more architectural interesting to it. With the.
There's still more.
We're going more with the first tones.
I just can't see that.
Mornings, floor windows, we added, and we were looking to break up the massing of the building, I think those were some initial comments that were brought up by the board and also, also the county.
Is it possible we get a CVS rep to attend the meeting and discuss the design issues? Would that be of interest?
Yes.
You could, for a public hearing.
Well, I'm not sure we're going to get much of comments, because we had a couple of public hearings that day, so it's really going to be.
Might be interested in some of the feedback.
Well, I'm sure they're keeping them before that. I'm just looking for getting away from the flat roof concept somehow. And I'll throw that back at you, and I'll throw that back to them constantly, so.
I think a Dallas comment about the medical facility across the street would help quite a bit, make it look like it's a little false, then, McKipsey sometimes.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, every time I go out to this thing, and somebody's mentioned to me, they'll show me a show of a CVS store, there's only about 10,000 in this country, roughly, and they're multiple designs, and what we're, again, trying to do with, based on the criteria that they use to evaluate the viability of the store, et cetera, and the surrounding area, how much they will be willing to put into a construction on it, and what we're trying to do is get away from a box and make some architecture reviews, if you've made some, but I'm still sitting on flat roofs that come into town, and to attempt, we can do something about that would be helpful. Do they have any questions for Ken while we got him trapped for a while? I think looking at, and obviously having, planning, traffic studies for Mohawk, traffic studies for CVS, and traffic studies for Water Park, Wildberry. for CBS, and traffic studies for Water Park, Wildberry, you'll get to see a lot of the same thing. They're handled together, coordination on it, the counts, the methodology is pretty standardized. Some questions come up, and if you've seen some questions about stacking lanes and then things of that sort, or why don't we do something or other? If you'll bring them up, we'll sort them out, and, but I just wanted you to get an understanding of what is, and George alluded to in the, I did print it out. I'm proud of you. But question, impact on traffic on an EAF, gives you an idea of what DEC is saying when you read this, this is what you should be evaluating against. This is the level that they're talking about. I know when we get into a situation where you get a D and it goes to an F on a level of service, you got a problem, and that's significant, and you gotta address those things, but it's getting into that, that level of impact on it.
Can I just follow up on that?
Sure.
There are two things that you do. One is you make a determination of significance, and you go through the secret process to get there. And then, if you determine EIS is not required, you still go through the site plan process and look at the access and traffic considerations there, to determine whether it meets those standards as well. So there's a two-part level of analysis you go through, and even though you can have impacts, those impacts may not rise to the level that require EIS, but they may require conditions, or be in certain cases justify denial of the project based upon the site plan considerations. So you gotta keep both of those things in mind. Not every impact requires an EIS, but those impacts may be germane, relevant, and determinative in some cases when you get to the site plan or the subdivision stages, so.
Okay. Anything else for Walmart? John?
I do, I think...
Yeah. Yeah. I haven't gotten back to Maurice yet. Did you guys discuss, um...
We did.
And?
So Patty wasn't there.
Okay.
But Patty was there, and the farmers were there, and Maurice was absent, so I was running a meeting, and the conclusion was that although our attorney said we don't absolutely need this, we should join like this, the planning board felt that there was value in doing a joint building because we can reduce it to one public hearing. We recognize that we both have to make accurate decisions, and that's fine, you guys have to wait for this to begin, and that would be the basis, that was, that was the comment I think you drove to make.
Yeah, yeah.
So, once that's established, if we can do a joint building, I think that's a plan for us.
Okay. Because I told Maurice, May 27th, we could do a joint meeting, it's a Wednesday night, that's our next meeting.
So I guess we'll have to do two, right? Because we'll have to set the public route, determine if you're going to set one here, and then next week, and see what happens.
All right, so I'll get back to Maurice, and then we...
I mean, we're happy to come to your meeting, I mean, I'm happy to come to your meeting. I can speak for Maurice, so you're the agents and all that, so.
So we, no, we put you first up, we do everything first, and then to get that. Yeah, okay, it's all okay.
Yeah, it's fine with you.
All right, I just wanted, I didn't get to get back to them.
Yeah, and I actually haven't had a chance to talk to Maurice about it, but, and I don't know if he's followed up with Mayor Secretary, so he was going to call me, so he may, he may know more about it, but he doesn't know as much.
Okay.
So, but either way, it's fine.
All right.
But, okay, yeah, yeah, thanks. Thank you for coming.
Okay. Here, closer to a German. Okay. We've got probably, what?
Since Ken's here, the guidelines that we had, for the traffic access management.
Yes.
You have the authority to adopt guidelines. We have prepared a draft set for you to review, Ken has, Ken reviewed it, I guess, in October, November, so he's looked at it recently.
Oh, good, then he's better closer to it than I am.
But at some point, we should consider adopting those, because those are the details.
The details of the...
Will add four with the traffic study.
Right. Okay.
The biggest thing I saw is that the guidelines are, in terms of applicability, it gives some guidance as to the state routes and the county routes, listed 299 and 32, those of which also fall under, you know, DOT jurisdiction, county jurisdiction, so there could be an overlap of guidelines. And I know for certain, DOT has a set of guidelines called Policies and Standards for Intersections to State Highways, and it's part of a larger document called the Highway Design Manual. And the Highway Design Manual says, if you're building something along a state route, here are the guidelines that you should follow. The lane should be this wide, and transitions should be this long, you know, et cetera. So as part of that, they have these guidelines that talk about intersection spacing and driveway spacing, spacing, the angle that the driveway should come in, the width, curve, the curve radius, some of which overlaps, I think, with these town standards.
It should all overlap because, for two reasons. One is they want and have circulated a draft Traffic Access Management ordinance for towns to adopt. And they, they have pushed this. Secondly, Tom Wheeler has, has a number of, the transportation, that's a film, Transportation and Management. New Puls has its own traffic group.
Right.
With Gail and Tom.
Gail.
And those folks have really driven this, and they've been over these in detail, and they've recommended adoption. So I think we are consistent, and I think one reason for that is DOT would like to have the localities enforcing this, and making these standards part of their land, these approvals, instead of DOT coming in at the last minute, when they apply for a highway permit and saying, "Oh, we have different standards than what you've just spent three or four months approving." So that's the logic, I think, that it's supposed to, it's supposed to push these traffic access issues upfront and make them part of your site plan reviews, so site plan and work permits are consistent.
So an example of that is, and this goes back several years, but we're reviewing a project in the town of Newburgh, and it was, I think, a car wash out to 17K, and they had originally proposed two driveways, one was kind of an entrance, the other was an exit. And so at that time, DOT was very much a, you know, get, have the town look at it, and then send it to us, and then we'll look at it. And ultimately, the town had approved a site plan, and when it got to DOT, they said, "Well, we'd like to have these entrances consolidated into one, make it one curb cover rather than two." The applicant, you know, complied with that, but also had to come back to the planning board and say, "All right, this is what DOT is looking for, I need a site plan approval again." So if that's the issue of giving the town more directive to be upfront and control those issues, then that type of example, which he kind of weeded out, you know, would be addressed early on, rather than, you know, going to DOT later on and then having that changed.
So basically, having a policy in place to, for access management is a handoff to a applicant first up.
Yes.
One of the authors of the access management guidelines, too, was the DOT planner in Albany that does, does a lot of these. And he was pushing it, as George said, he was pushing communities to adopt these.
All right. All right, well, I will, we'll get that out, the policy back out to everybody. We'll get it on one of our workshop meetings, the mayor, June, and read it over. If you have any questions, I will have a discussion, and we'll make an adoption of the policy. And again, saves us time and effort, I give another to them upfront.
If the applicant's on, too.
Yes, them, too.
The other point I just wanted to make is historic preservation, is the commission's input is going to be relevant to your CQ on Mohawk, and if you're going on site visits, it might be useful to have them, or at least have a representative attend, so you all can see what's going on, and at some point, there'll be a discussion about how this all fits into the historic landscape, and how impacts of that may be revealed.
Kelly brought up issue that, with tell historic preservation, John, and all that, we are going to plan on site visits, second Saturday and third Saturday in May, if they're available, I'm happy to have them attend. I think they have a public hearing on their CFA on the 20th. In May 20th?
The 20th.
Yeah.
John asked, because Joe has a conflict, John asked me to draft the CFA for their review.
Okay. All right. Anything else before the vote? Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you all.
I think I know about five of those, and they're all within something else.
No, they'll all say the same thing.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
He reviewed them.
He reviewed them.
He reviewed them.
He reviewed them.